I'd like to call this regular August 8th council meeting the order. Would everybody please stand? Have a moment of silence and let's remember all of those who passed away during the block. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pezza, Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Catroci.
Present.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Here.
Okay, we're going to start off with anybody in public participation, anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, go to the podium and state your name. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
I live at 205 Pond Street. I'm here because I know that a person will be selected to serve as mayor until the election in 2024. I'm asking the council, or whoever it is that decides, to seriously consider a woman to be mayor and/or a person of color to be mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room? That ends public participation. Okay, we're going to go through our agenda as quick as possible. Lorraine, do you have anything?
I just, once again, I'll have to ask about no run, because I got, I got like three phone calls and people stopped me as well this week. Anything? Have you heard anything?
They are moving ahead slowly, slowly.
That's all it happened.
Right. All right.
Yeah, I actually, I, one thing that I want to congratulate the Puerto Rican Culture Association for their festival, it was a blast. They had tons of people that showed.
We saw you dancing.
And actually, it was an honor to be a part of the festival and stuff, so great job. They work very, very hard. And the other is that I did meet with an Amtrak official in regards to the train tracks all throughout the North Ward, along with the Public Works Kevin. He actually gave us a tour, helped me with the official take her to a tour and of the whole North Ward. So right now, I'm just waiting, we are negotiating and trying to work things out as far as getting a cleanup. So as far as the North Ward cleanup is still at a standstill until I get further information, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Louis?
I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to mention John Jukey Pika passed away. I was away when he was buried, but John was a borough employee for, I think, about 50 years, and after he retired, he was always out at the hospital, being, you know, orderly, taking people around to the rooms and whatnot, so I just want to pass my condolences on to his family. I want to thank the artists of Bristol, they had a showing yesterday at the Sunday Stroll, but this was down at the, behind, on the parking lot side next to Naked Brewery, with Dr. Monerius building the basement they used for the display, and it was very nice, and they're going to have it again next month, so that's a real plus to see them back in action in town. And it was good to see Chief Morse and the Courier Times, National Night Out, and he got top billing, so glad to see that happening for us. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Louis. Patty?
Yeah, I just wanted, I was away unfortunately, but not unfortunately, I was on vacation, and I just want to thank Officer or Chief Morse for the great ice cream little things that you did on the 27th. A lot of kids really appreciate it, a lot of adults appreciate it, a lot of people in the community see that you're out trying to get all over the community, not just certain areas, and I think that was awesome. Also, there was a, what was it called, a night out or something?
Oh, National Night Out.
Yeah, and I missed that too, because I was away, but I think that went over well, everybody seemed to welcome it, and I see the community realizing that we're all trying to work together with our police, and I want to continue that, and I really thank you for everything you're doing for the community, and that's all.
I just have a couple of things. One, I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to see the new street sweeper?
Yes.
That, that street sweeper was the contribution of the casino funding through the RDA, so we would like to thank the RDA board for giving us the money to purchase that street sweeper in the amount of $342?
$328,000.
$28,000 for that new street sweeper. So if you haven't, didn't see it on your way out, take a look at it, it's been running through town, and I think it's doing a great job. The other thing is, I apologize for not mentioning John Jukey Picas in the beginning, Louis, and thank you. I went to his viewing, but just with everything going on. And the last thing is the St. Anne-St. Mark Carnival, that starts Monday night, August 15th, and runs through August 20th. It's a great night for everybody to come out, it's a great community event, and it's very successful, and I want to thank the police department in conjunction with Ernie and Anna Marie DeCara, who pays for the entire night to sponsor the night out with the police. All the kids go on the rides free, they give them food, so it's a great night on Tuesday to 16th. So if you live in town and your children can't afford to go to the carnival, this is a great opportunity to take them there on Tuesday, and again, they get hot dogs and pizza and something to drink, and all the police departments are, and it's a great night for the kids. So again, if you could come out and support the St. Anne-St. Mark Carnival, starting on the 15th to the 20th, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. every night. Mr. Dillon?
Just a note on item eight of the regular agenda, it's to authorize the advertising of the proposed ordinance, Act 167. So you're not adopting it tonight, you're just authorizing the advertising of it.
Louis, you have anything? Okay, before we start voting, we have a distinguished guest here this evening. Our former governor is here to talk about a project he's making, a major investment in Bristol Borough, so I'd like to introduce Mark Schweiker, our former governor.
Thank you. Thank you. He's the builder, BCS, Bernie Sauer, who will follow me in a second here, so thank you for the opportunity to visit just for a couple of minutes, because I know you've got a full night, and I'll just, I have this, I whispered to Jim Dillon that a little bit of deja vu in that, I'm a former municipal official as well, I was a township supervisor in Middletown for eight years, so I know what you've got to do each month, I appreciate that kind of service, and certainly the references to longtime residents and civic events is good to hear. I'll mention this, as we talk about what I think will be a beautiful addition or completion effort to wreck the Court on the Delaware, that it is a little bit of coming home for me, as you know, I'm a lower bucks guy for Kathy and I, other than our kids, raising our kids in the mid-state, when I had the chance to serve as Lieutenant Governor and Governor, you know, our doctor was Paul McElvein on Mulberry Street, we know that, 50 years of great family care, and our dentist was down the street on Radcliffe Street, so I do feel a sense of kinship, and it's wonderful to be here tonight, thank you for the opportunity ever so briefly to talk about what we'd like to do in light of what I think we all know is an attractive, resurgent Bristol Borough, and we'd like to be a part of that, and specifically to help complete this impressive project that's now known as Radcliffe Court on the Delaware. So I'll give you some bearings, I'm going to use the mouse here, and I hope the folks at home can follow, and then Bernie will talk about the living experience itself in the condominiums. So let me kind of take you from Borough Hall here, as if you're at Mill Street and Radcliffe Street, you know, you go past St. Mark's, you go past Caesar's, and on the right, you come up on the office building that we all know, all know is there. So we're right about here, and all of a sudden, you're going to see, this is an illustration of where the six pads or building sites will be, but up here is the brand-new townhouse development, already completed, 75, or 73 townhouses, 58 new residents to Bristol Borough, many of them new residents to Bristol Borough, I think there were a couple from the Borough that now live there. So, and I have to say this, that Bernie Sauer has done a super job, and I offer that observation because of the comments and the reflections and observations shared by the current owners. They love it, whether it's the walking trail, you know, the gleam of the Delaware in the morning, just the water living, we all know this, we're all from here, we all often talked about how nice it would be to be able to live on the Delaware River, and that's what motivates us as well, that's what motivated them to buy those townhouses in the townhouse section, otherwise known as Phase 1. So this is Phase 2, where our company, Serenity Properties, in a long, in the making transaction through the federal district court, bought out of bank, from what I think is a beautiful seven acres, tucked between, where the office building would be here, the parking lot, and what you now know as the townhouse area of Phase 1. So we're going to talk about Phase 2, just take me a minute or two, and then I want to have Bernie talk about the structures themselves, the condo living itself. So to give you your bearings, if you park your car on Radcliffe Street right here, you see the six pads, here's the Delaware River, so walking back from the Delaware to Radcliffe Street, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six pads, beginning with Building A, B, C, D, E, and F, I don't think I have to convince anyone in this room that this is a gorgeous location, especially the condominiums that will be on the river itself. But having said that, every structure, every condo will have a review to some extent, and that accent, in a structural sense, Bernie will cover. So just for instance, Building D, to give you, to do the math, as this council knows, on three different occasions in recently this year, had given land development approval for what had been addressed twice in the past, formally speaking by the council. And so in each structure, you're going to see four levels with residences, really five stories, because the ground level's parking. So if I go from the ground up, you've got parking on the ground level, somewhat depressed in the ground, and then four residential floors on top, four units on each floor, times that equals the 16, and the six adds up to the 96 condos that I mentioned a couple of minutes ago. So that is a quick looksee from, so to speak, if you were traveling on Radcliffe Street toward Edgely, and you were to look right, or somehow you were traveling and drawn on looking down, the six pads represent where the six structures will go, and these 96 condos. So with that, I will ask Bernie to talk about where we stand, and kind of give you a looksee at the early architectural renderings. Let me say for the record, not completed yet, far advanced, but not done, I think you're going to like them, it's the kind of, I think, living experience, especially the folks that we're already hearing from people. I mean, think about it, you had a couple of moments in the last few months where there was discussion about Radcliffe Court on the Delaware, we've already heard from a number of people that they want to see the sample when the time comes, they're talking about good faith deposits already, and I think it's really a tribute indirectly speaking, aside from what we've got in mind in our architectural and living sense, friends, I really think it's a tribute to the civic momentum that Bristol Borough has right now, the commercial momentum. People want to be in historic Bristol Borough, and they want to be part of this resurgency that we all know, that in part you, this council, and with your leadership, Mr. President, has propagated. So with that, I'm going to ask Bernie to kind of take you inside the condos and give you a look at that. Good evening, council. My name is Bernie Sauer, I'm currently building the project now at what we call Radcliffe Court on the Delaware, and I'm going to take you through some slides, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. As Mark mentioned, we, these are preliminary, these will be finalized hopefully in the near future, but as you can see, this is actually the footprint of the property as it is right now, so this generally will be what it looks like when it's finished. What we did was, and I'll get to one slide here, I can't zoom in or anything, but what we wanted to do is kind of take what we did in Phase 1 of the project, which was the townhomes, and keep that historical style that Bristol Borough has with brick. Now, the building that you see, which I think is probably E or F, you have brick inside here, we'll probably add some more brick on to the ends, like I said, to keep that historical sense and tradition of the borough. Each deck, each unit has its unique deck off the master bedroom, and then you're going to have a corner balcony. Yeah, so you'll have, so this is one unit here, I'll go on the first floor, you'll have a deck off the master bedroom, and then over here, you'll have a corner deck that comes off the living room, and we think, which with each position of the building, you'll have river view from each one of those units. So we're very excited about the project. Oh, there's the, there's my stuff.
That's great.
Yeah, that looked great. So again, we're very excited about bringing this project into Bristol Borough, and I share Mark's enthusiasm about it, we're very excited, we're hoping to, you know, we'll see how things go and how quick we can finalize these plans, and maybe we can start something this year. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. Yep, Lorraine?
What's the square footage of each?
Well, again, right now, we're in the preliminary stages of it. Approximately, we'll probably be maybe 1200 to 1400 square feet, but again, we really wanted to let the market dictate where we want to go. If this project hits a home run, like I think it will, you know, we may go increase the size as we go further towards the river. But again, you know, with the economy the way it is, and building parts and tough to get, materials, those kind of things will dictate in what we're going to do.
Also, how many bedrooms?
It'll be two bedrooms, and if we go forward with maybe increasing the size, it could go up to a three bedroom, as we get closer to the river.
Advanced?
Too bad.
Too bad.
Yes. Perhaps I can add, Councilwoman, too, that, you know, you've got six, so we're not going to start six simultaneously.
Right.
No less than one, perhaps two, but Bernie made a reference to how the market reacts in, you know, visit traffic, and we'll see, depending on what we hear, and there's others, their preference, you know, we can perhaps adjust, but that, this is early thinking in this August day, this is how we see it right now, and I wanted you to have a feel for this.
So just so you know, this project was approved.
2006.
2006. So this, nothing has changed on this project, it's not that they're coming in and changing the plans and adding five condo buildings, so they're doing exactly as this in 2006, when the previous council approved this plan on the road.
Yeah, the original, 2006 to 2015, certainly, you gave a close review just a couple of months ago, from a subdivision and land development perspective, and the Pennsylvania municipalities code, or as you call it, PMC, no alteration, no shift from that at all.
All right. So we're building-
That's our obligation, and we know that.
Right, and I know, I mean, Mark, I know him as a friend, I know Bernie, we're friends, and I know these two guys are going to do an outstanding project for the Borough, they're not going to leave this town knowing that something's not done, just like the pit, they took it to a whole new level, they increased the lighting, they put new blacktop where it was supposed to be, they landscaped it. So, you know, they bought into our Bristol Borough theory, how we want things to go, so.
Well, I think you should be proud of what's already there, I mean, it's been, I know, a long, demanding-
Long time.
And we're not, we're certainly mindful of that, that's why we want to get to it, even though the market's weakened a little bit, and, you know, mortgage rates went up and kicked down a little bit, we're moving ahead, we want to be thoughtful about it and prudent about it, but we feel real good. And my sense is, if I could just say this, and finish with this perhaps, you know, I've been, other than our time in Harrisburg, I think I know a little bit about the demographics of our area, and, you know, I think within 15, 20 miles of here, even from on the Jersey side, folks have, you know, they want the empty nester picture, they don't want to mow the lawn anymore, but they still want to stay here, they still want to be in lower bucks. Then all of a sudden, you show them a really livable place like this, a townhouse or a condominium, and they see the river, and their mind, it's the total package, it's an alluring deal, and we're kind of counting on that. So in that regard, we're optimistic, and so to speak, we're making a big investment in Bristol Borough, and we're determined to make good on that, so.
Any questions for Mark or Bernie?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate the time, thank you.
And you know we're available for anything you need.
Oh, thanks, thank you.
Chief, you have anything?
Just real quick, I wanted to echo a couple of the sentiments that were brought up by you guys. We had a lot of events last month, we had the Puerto Rican Day Festival, we had the Sunday Stroll, the Car and Boat Show, we had the Ice Cream with the Cop at the, in the First Responders Event at the Snyder Girardi with all the camps, and we have the carnival coming up, we have National Night Out, and I just wanted to thank a couple of people. I wanted to thank Gazarondo's and Danny Keegan, and I wanted to thank Bristol Environmental and Ernie DeCara for helping sponsor these events with the police and the kids, and that's what we're looking for, and that's what I want this town to be about, community, partnerships, and a safe town. So with that, I just wanted to say that there are still tickets left for the carnival, you can come into the police station and get them up until August 12th, and then I'll finish with, school will be starting in a few weeks, and then I just wanted everybody to be mindful that the crossing guards will be out there again, and that the kids will be crossing, the police will be out there, so just pay attention and slow down a little bit. Thank you.
Number one, number two, number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the approval of the council meeting minutes July 11, 2022, accept the Treasury report for June 2022, accept the inspection report for July 2022, to accept the Public Works report for July 2022, to accept the police report for July 2022, to accept the fire chief report for June 2022, and to accept the harbor report for July 2022.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the amendment to agreement between Bristol Borough and Portnoy Law Associates for the collection of delinquent municipal claims on behalf of Bristol Borough.
Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising for the ordinance for Portnoy Law Associates proving validation notice fee to be added as a collection fee to the amount collected as part of unpaid municipal claims for delinquent accounts.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for multi-motor transportation funding grant application for Mill Street and Radcliffe Streets traffic improvements in the amount of $414,000.
Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertising of the ordinance amending the Act 167 Storm Order Management Ordinance per the PA Department of Environmental Protection.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Everbridge NEXL 360 Community and Emergency Connections Program for $400,665 a year, and $4,323 a year to end the rate.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Catroci, let me explain what this is, it's $4,000.
What did they say? $400? $5,000?
You said $400.
Oh!
But it's $4,000. We had a meeting, we had a meeting a few weeks ago, myself, Chief Merle, our fire chief, the emergency, Mr. Dillon, this is a system that they used a lot in New Jersey, it gives you alerts for storms, for traffic, for accidents, for fires, for anything. So by getting this system, you join up to receive either a text or an email. We're going to put signs all over town come September and October, how to join up, let's just say you're parked down in the Mill Street parking lot, and there's a flood, Merle can go on and say, please move your car, the tide's coming up, if you're a member of this NEXL, you'll get an alert to go down there and move your car immediately. So it's a good tool, it's going to be good for the chief, and for our emergency management coordinator to organize things in town for festivals, so you name it, this thing can do it. And I think Joe is very happy with it, and so is Merle, so that's what this is all about. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number 10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the Losbitter Loftus Construction Incorporated for $2120,000 for the Maple Beach Bridge Replacement Project contingent upon the completion of the 30-day RCO construction.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? Just so you know, this is a project that's zero cost to taxpayers, this is all being done through grants and things that we applied for over the years, and, oh, we're Kurt and Amanda, if you want to touch on this, are we good, or? Give us a quick, Amanda.
Yeah, just a quick summary of the project, it's the Maple Beach Road Bridge, so just past the Public Works Building, going over Otter Creek, and it has been closed for quite some time now, so we've been seeking grant funding to replace the bridge. We have secured enough funding for the project, so we are now able to award it if council chooses. So as Mr. President said, we, it will be fully funded by grants and outside sources, there will be no taxpayer funding involved in this project.
And it's, right now, to get to our sewer plant, you have to go all the way around Maple Beach to come in, through the Burlington Bridge, or-
Dow property.
Right, Dow lets us cut through, but, you know, who knows for how long, but this is a good project, especially there's no cost and- But this is a good project, especially there's no cost, and bikers can go over and take the trail, so it's going to be used. So again, no cost to taxpayers. Thanks, Amanda. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Number 11.
Mr. President, I can make a motion for the approval of a police vehicle, a 2022 F-150 police responder, four by four, from Red Beans, in the amount of $58,430.15.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? Just to let you know, right now, it's very hard for us to get vehicles. We can't get trucks, we can't get cars. Our inspection department, all three vehicles should have been replaced years ago, our, some of our police cars have over 100,000 miles on it. So we cannot get a car, but there's a pickup truck that they use, other townships are using as police vehicles. It comes equipped with the cage, everything we need, so we're trying one. It's better than not having anything. So that's what this is all about. Somebody says, why are you buying a truck? That's why. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, before we go to the next item on the agenda, we have, Billy, why don't you explain the process with how many days we have in office today?
Yeah, the code clearly provides where there's a vacancy in the mayor's position, which of course there was when Joe passed. The Borough Council has 30 days to approve a replacement, just like they do 30 days to replace a vacant council seat. So I think we're coming up on that 30 days. During that time, the president council served as acting mayor, so you didn't vote anytime tonight as acting mayor. You couldn't vote. And the code provides that whoever is appointed gets to serve until the next municipal election, which will be, well, gets to serve until after the municipal election. The municipal election will be next November. They get to serve till the first Monday of January 2024. So it's about a little less than a year and a half. At that point in November, a new mayor will be elected.
Okay, so we received two applications for mayor, so I just, Jacqueline, so you know, there were no females that applied, or African Americans applied, or Hispanics. No, there was a Hispanic that applied, I'm sorry. So we had two applications, a couple texts from people that said they were interested, and council basically discussed this, and Lorraine, you have a motion?
Yes.
That you would like to read.
Mr. President, I'd like to adopt the resolution to appoint Ralph Giuseppe the Third Mayor to fill the existing vacancy until the first Monday of January 2024.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? With that being said, all those in favor?
I wanted to say something. I think that Ralph is a great, like, person for this job, because he has done so much for our town. He knows a lot, and he knows a lot of people, and he has a great personality. He's just, he's a brilliant guy, so I think that he is the best candidate, and his resume showed that. He had a wonderful resume. So I think, you know, it's important to say that, you know, however he is.
So we're going to bow, and it's your, our honors here to do this swearing, is all those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations.
I sent the same thing.
I, I, I would support obey and defend-
I would support obey and defend-
-the Constitution of the United States-
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And I do further affirm-
And I do further affirm-
-I will perform the duties of my office-
Perform the duties of my office.
For the borough, for the mayor of borough Bristol-
For the mayor of borough Bristol.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
in me to serve in this duty as mayor of Bristol Borough. You know, for the last 20 years, I've been coming up to this council chamber and supporting my father and the rest of the members of council, and our former mayor, Joe Saxton. Most of the time during the meetings, as I was tonight, I just stood in the doorway or in the hallway when the meetings were crowded, and it's no secret that I've supported each and every member on this council floor and our former mayor when they were up for So I couldn't be more thankful and humbled that they're now giving me their support and showing me how much they appreciated me during those times for the last 20 years. When I think about Bristol and the position of mayor, I couldn't possibly accept this position without publicly paying my respects to our late mayor, Joe Saxton. Joe epitomized what it meant to be the mayor, and no one was ever more proud to hold a position in this borough than Joe. He represented this town and its residents with the utmost dignity, and I can only hope that my time spent in this position can mirror his commitment to service. As a lifelong, as a lifelong Bristolian and real estate broker for the last 21 years, I witnessed a major transformation in this community. Professionally, I spent my first five years or so in real estate trying to convince people to move into the borough, and this was the place they wanted to be. This was Bucks County's hidden gem, as we call it. Since that initial timeframe, the interest and level of demand for people wanting to move to Bristol is amazing. I constantly interact with buyers coming from Princeton, Burlington, and other parts of New Jersey, along with those coming from other parts of Bucks County and Philadelphia, who truly desire to be homeowners in this borough. The demand and enthusiasm did not happen by accident. It is 100% direct result of this council, their commitment to excellence, and working with the best manager and police chief in Bucks County. I mention our police force because sometimes it's easy for us to take for granted what this department does every day to keep our streets safe and give us peace of mind that we can walk out our front door. Now, some people will simply say, well, that's their job, and I say that's nonsense. It's more than a job. It's a commitment, and it's responsibility and pride that each officer takes every day that they come to work. And if you don't think that's the case, just take a look at what's going on in this country, and you'll realize what a great job this police force is doing in Bristol Borough. I am a huge supporter of the men and women in blue, and I really look forward to working with Chief Moore's and keeping the streets of Bristol Borough safe. I want him and the rest of his police force to know that I will 100% always have your backs, and together, we will always work for the residents of Bristol. I also have to express my sincere appreciation for the other group of first responders in this community, and that's our volunteer firefighters. I've always said that anyone that can leave their friends and family on the drop of a dime and immediately stop what they're doing to put their life on the line for people they don't know, will always have my utmost respect and appreciation. There are another group of men and women that I feel sometimes we just take for granted. These individuals aren't paid, they're volunteers, and God forbid you're ever in a situation where you need them, their response time is impeccable, and you could have peace of mind that they will be there to do everything they can to save you and your family. I think we would all agree that these volunteers are one of the many things that makes our community unique and gives us pride to say that we live in Bristol Borough. I believe that everyone who lives in Bristol has a different level of pride that most townships and municipalities will never, ever experience. Whether you're a lifelong Bristolian, or you moved into the community at some point, living in this borough is special. It starts with the generations of families that have been here, the friendships created with your neighbors and the people on your block, and the memories that the children create in the schools and competing with each other in activities throughout the community. This is why we call Bristol Borough home, and this is the real reason why I want to serve as your mayor. Approximately 20 years ago, a man who was actually my age at the time, made a decision to get involved in borough politics. A man who came into this Borough Council Chamber with the determination that Bristol Borough was going to be a better place for every man, woman, and child, whether you were living here or just coming to visit. At the time he was getting involved, we thought he was nuts, but looking back on it, we should all be thankful that he did, and I couldn't be more proud to call that man my father. Over the last 20 years, this man has worked tirelessly to make Bristol Borough the community we're proud of, and over the years, he thankfully surrounded himself with the same like-minded, forward-thinking individuals that you see sitting here today, who are happy to also serve the residents of Bristol Borough the way he does. But he didn't pick these people and just plop them into their seats. It was you, the residents of Bristol Borough, who voted for them as a sign of thanks and confidence in the job that was taking place in this community. It was a thank you for your hard work and dedication, the same thanks and appreciation I can only hope to experience when my name is eventually on the ballot. In closing, I just want to say thanks to my parents, who for 46 years have shown me unconditional love and support and allowed me to achieve many of my personal and professional goals. My sister and brother-in-law, who are my biggest cheerleaders, and always listening, no matter what the topic or what the situation, they're always there for me. And last, but definitely not least, my daughter, Sienna Jordan, who just turned 12 this past Friday, along with my nephew, Robert, and my niece, Mila. My daughter, niece, and nephew are the motivation behind almost everything I do in life, because at the end of the day, I believe we have to leave this place better than we inherit it, and that's what I want to do for them. Thank you.
I guess after that speech, there's nothing else we could do except, can I get a motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.